I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:05 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll have our coordinator call the roll next.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins? Mr. Scirvano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Present.
Dr. Harner?
Here.
Mr. Connor? Mrs. Powers?
Here.
With five present, two absent, we have a quorum.
Tonight, we had set time aside for the public hearing on the tentative budget for 2015-16, but we do not have any individuals who submitted public comment cards seeking time to speak on the issue, so we'll move along. Are there -- there are no members who did sign up, so are there any comments or questions from board members regarding the budget? Okay. I don't believe we have any media students from Auburn here tonight, so we'll move on then to petitions and communication portion of our meeting when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communication portion of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.3030, the public comments portion is limited to 30 minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and to conduct our meeting in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted. Each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes. It's not appropriate to address individual board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. Two names will be called. Have you come to the front? And we have a clock to help you. We have two speakers tonight. We thank you for your interest and your cooperation in our guidelines. Our first speaker is Allison Wang, to be followed by Jeffrey Wang. Allison?
Good evening, everyone. It's been a while, but Running Start is a competitive program where disadvantaged students can pursue a rigorous education and get a college degree without astronomical costs out of their pockets. It opens up an incredibly diverse number of options such as nursing, social work, aerospace engineering, and postgraduate opportunities that were previously only available to those with the financial resources. Now, one board member said that Running Start draws high-performing students away from advanced placement and honors courses, which reduces student-to-teacher ratios and lowers cost efficiency. Now, in reality, only 30 students out of the 7,676 high school students from the entire district were able to enroll in Running Start. So, did taking away 0.39% of high school students actually break the classroom numbers? And would five more students staying in the program actually cause such drastic changes? And yes, on the other hand, Auburn High School field houses cost taxpayers $13.6 million. And yes, athletics is a vital part of every high school student's experience. However, may I remind everyone that there is a gym and stadium at Auburn that is functional. Now, increasing enrollment in Running Start for the next decade would cost a mini-school fraction of all of the constructed field houses, not even including maintenance or building deprecation. Ironically, also, one board member said that, "Isn't it always disappointing when someone decides that we can't make our own decisions based on what we believe is the best interest of students?" I completely agree with the statement wholeheartedly. It's horrible when parents cannot make their own decisions for their own children. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Jeffrey Wang is next.
Hello. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to start off by complimenting on the amount of progress that this school district has made in terms of improving diversity in the upper echelons of administrations. It's true that we have a disproportionately low number of African-Americans in the top administration positions, and it's also true that our schools are becoming increasingly segregated because of zoning. But, on the bright side, at least when we give this Pledge of Allegiance, we're not giving it to the Confederate flag, like in some states. And that's also not to say that the school district is also trying incredibly hard to try to improve the diversity. For example, it's willing to go all the way to the nearest population of Spanish-speaking teachers in Spain, apparently, in order to help search for teachers out there. And I think I, for one, realize that we don't really have that many Chinese teachers in the school district, so I'll gladly, wholeheartedly volunteer to go to Chinatown in either, you know, New York City, San Francisco, Hong Kong, maybe even Tokyo, Japan, to try to search for the Chinese teachers to go there. And then, in reality, it's probably going to be the last vacation I can ever take because this fall, I'm going to be going to graduate school in California, and one of the realities that I've come up to have to come to face is that I have to be able to support my entire life now on a very small graduate student stipend. So, I wanted to share with you a few lessons that I actually learned from the school district on how to survive on a stipend. First, I'm moving to California so that because of what I realized is that here in the Midwest, it gets way too cold in order to be able to cut off the heating. Second, I'm going to be cutting off all of my printing supplies and all of my school supplies because what I've learned is that in the 21st century, with technology and education, then learning is truly optional. But, I'm going to try to recognize what are the important things. I will wholeheartedly dedicate myself to give myself to give my own younger brother $2 million.
I'm sorry. Thank you. You're tying this up.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Are there any board member comments at this time? Mrs. Powers?
There we go. I just wanted to thank the community members that reached out to me regarding Running Start. There were several who supported the district's position. There were some that were opposed to it as well, but as we are very limited in resources and financial constraints, you know, we have heard from the community several, several times about making sure that our elementary children know how to read and to really start, and that the most benefit is to get that child early and help them to have that running start later on. And so, I appreciated their support in recognizing that if we had unlimited dollars, it'd be great to send more kids to Running Start. But, we do have limited dollars, and the state is not helping us, and so, to do the best we can with what we have, focusing on early childhood and elementary reading and writing and math is really the foundation. And so, I appreciate the community members who reached out with that perspective and our support. So, thank you.
Any other board member comments? Okay. We'll move on then to our consent portion of our agenda, including the following. The meeting minutes of June 9, 2015, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, and travel, the bid recommendations for the Kennedy Middle School pool renovation, the Flynn Middle School re-roofing, the Welsh Elementary School addition and renovations, the sound upgrades at East Guilford and Jefferson High Schools, and the Bloom Elementary School boiler replacement project, the recurring contracts for McGuire Woods Consulting, the addendum to consulting agreement for comprehensive human resource services, the interest transfer for May 2015, the financial results year-to-date May 2015, monthly investment report for May 2015, the prevailing wage resolution, and the Freedom of Information Act log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Harner?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Powers. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson?
Eight, B through E.
Eight, B.
And then nine, A, and B.
Eight, B through D? Through E, okay. All right. And then A and B for nine, okay? Any others from anyone else? Okay. Now, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the items not pulled from the consent portion of our agenda.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and two absent.
Do you want to do all of those separate, Ms. Jackson? Together? Breakout nine A and B? All right. Okay. Okay. So, I'll now take a motion then for the approval of bid recommendations eight, B, C, D, and E, and nine, A consulting agreement. There a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Harner.
Second.
Ms. Powers. Any discussion? Now, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of items eight, B through nine, A. Ms. Jackson?
No, that's not correct. It was eight, B through E, and then nine, A and B separately.
Okay. All right. So, I will take a motion then to approve items eight, B through E.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Harner?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Powers. Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Can I have the coordinator call the roll on that motion?
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
The motion passes with four yeses, one no, and two absent.
Okay. I'll now take a motion then for nine, A, which is the McGuire Woods Consulting Agreement.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Harner. There a second? I'll second it. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
The fiscal impact, is it an increase or has it remained the same?
Is it the same amount?
Yes. Nine, A is the same amount.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on approval of nine, A, the McGuire Woods Consulting contract?
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses, one no, and two absent.
Okay. And I'll take a motion for item nine, B, which is the addendum to the consulting agreement for comprehensive human resource services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Harner?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Powers. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Powers?
So, the summary sheet does not have a -- under fiscal impact, it just says yes. Could someone speak to what the fiscal impact is?
The total fiscal impact is $78,000 for the term of the agreement.
On nine, B?
Yes.
So for the -- Yes. The $78,000, is that not for the McGuire Woods? Okay. And so, we are on nine, B, which is the consulting agreement for comprehensive human resources.
Under E? Yeah, it says. Ms. Holdley?
It would be $9,000 a month. The addendum to the contract is for $9,000 per month.
It's --
How much?
It's $6,500 per month.
$6,500 a month for 12 months.
Okay.
So, we're paying a consulting person the equivalent of, I mean, what could be a full-time permanent person? I -- okay.
Ms. Jackson, did you have a question?
Why are we paying her? This contract is going through, it's, I believe, it's July 2016, correct? And Ms. Burke served when we didn't have a CHRO. Now, we have a CHRO. So, why are we extending this contract, I believe it's through July 2016, at $6,500 per month on top of what we're paying in other staffing and HR?
Yes, that is correct. There are several projects that Ms. Burke was requested to work on in terms of proving the leadership, as well as looking at some other areas in the compensation area. So, yes, she was requested to stay on board through June 30 of 2016.
What are those projects? What are the several projects that she's going to be working on?
One of -- several of the projects include principal leadership and development, succession planning, compensation are the top three.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item nine, B.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes with three yeses, two no's, and two absent.
We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the compensation for non-bargaining employees as revised to reflect a base salary of $82,580.40 for Pilar Pay, the appointment of Pilar Pay as a 12-month administrator of speech and language, the appointment of Rebecca Frankel as a 12-month administration special education position, the appointment of Amy Galvin as 12-month administrator of special education, and the HR organizational report and addendum, and the following closed session consent items for student discipline in which expelled or suspended students are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. The expulsions for JMW-1, HE-2, DIT-3, AWD-5, AS-6, YD-7, and JES-8 are held in abeyance contingent upon a conditional probationary agreement for the entire 2015-16 school year being executed on or before the next board meeting. The five-day suspension of MDR-4 is upheld. The expulsion for JJD-9 is held in abeyance contingent upon a conditional probationary agreement for the first semester of the 2015-16 school year being executed on or before the next board meeting. The expulsion for SJL-11 is held in abeyance contingent upon a conditional probationary agreement for the first trimester of the 2015-16 school year being executed on or before the next board meeting. The expulsion for PAR-12 and OA-14 are held in abeyance contingent upon a conditional probationary agreement for the first two trimesters of the 2015-16 school year being executed on or before the next board meeting, and the following student EAC-13 is expelled for the first two trimesters of the 2015-16 school year, and the following students have been granted conditional probationary agreements. CTB-15, CPT-17, MC-18 was pulled by administration, SC-19, REH-21, TEF-22, ASM-23, and DT-24. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Harner?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Powers. There's no discussion. Are there any items that board members would like to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Powers?
11, A, 11, E.
11, A and 11, E. Okay. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the items not pulled. Lisa, I'm sorry, did you have another one?
12, L.
EAC-13. EAC-13.
Okay. Any others? Okay. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the items not pulled.
Mrs. Powers? Ms. Jackson? Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and two absent.
All right. And I'll take a motion and a second to approve 11, A, the compensation for non-bargaining employees.
So moved.
Dr. Harner?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Powers. There is no discussion. Coordinator call the roll.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes with three yeses, two no's, and two absent.
And I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of item 11, E, the HR organizational report and addendum.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCulloch?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Harner. There's no discussion. I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 11, E.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
The motion passes with three yeses, two no's, and two absent.
I'll take a motion and a second to approve the student discipline, which was for student EAC-13. And I have a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Harner?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Powers. The coordinator call the roll on the approval of the student discipline for student EAC-13.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
The motion passes with four yeses, one no, and two absent.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett?
Thank you, Mr. Scirvano. Had an opportunity to spend some time at Oswego North High School, talking about proration and state funding, and that continues to be a challenge in our district, standing with other districts, students represented, teachers, also other superintendents, talking about the need to equitably handle the distribution of general state aid, and hopeful that, along with a number of other efforts, we'll continue that conversation. Illinois continues to be 49th out of 50 states in terms of the equity of school funding, and districts that do not have high levels of property wealth certainly suffer from that. Also, had a chance to once again address the Title I issue in terms of how Illinois is one of, is, I believe, the only state that puts the kind of really significant penalties in terms of money that is taken. in terms of money that is taken away when certified staff is hired with Title I dollars. So those two issues were put on the forefront, and I had the opportunity to provide comment to the Illinois State Board of Education on those issues. While they don't set the funding levels, they can talk about proration being distributed in a more equitable way. Thank you.
Education committee has not met since our previous board meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for July 16th in this room at 5:30.
I don't recall us meeting, so no.
The facilities oversight committee met last Tuesday. We reviewed our normal set of updated standing reports with respect to the progress of all construction projects, which are all, and all that information is out on the board docs in a fairly vast level of detail for people to review. We had an extensive report with respect to the demographer, of which I'm not going to speak too much about, because we're going to have a separate presentation on that here later in the agenda. Talked a little bit about communication and the need for ongoing communication with respect to the plans for the schools, particularly those schools that will be closing a year from August. And we looked at a template for what are, included all the elements of our final, of what our final report would be, and so we'll, that it was a good, good meeting, lots of good questions with respect to, particularly as it revolved around the demographers report. The next meeting will be Tuesday, July 21st, 7:00 PM, in the fourth floor? Fourth floor conference room. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on to our action items then, and our first action item tonight is the resolution to adopt the 2015-16 budget. Is there a motion and a second to approve the budget?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Harner. Seconded by Ms. McCulloch. Any questions or discussion? If none, I'll have the coordinator call the role. Ms. McCulloch.
I just want to make sure I know that the board had asked for, and I just wanted to ascertain publicly that it was captured, the shift of the salaries for the people that were in the, that are working on the facilities, being moved out of our general fund. And the second is that the budget captures the additional buses that we requested at the last meeting. So both of those are there.
Yes, both of those items have been captured in the budget.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Now I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of item 16A, the adoption of the 2015-16 budget. Did somebody else, Ms. Jackson, did you have a question?
And so I just want to be clear, this budget reflects that we're going, we're anticipating receiving five categorical aid payments, correct? For the 15, 16. And we received four to date for this current budget.
I would actually have to check with Mary Ann on that, I'm not certain. We've received all of our categorical payments that we're expected to receive this year? Yes, we have not received the final one, but we are expecting to receive it.
When?
When? In July.
Any other questions?
And the GSA proration is at 89%. That's what this budget is based on, correct? And that's our current rate, is 89%?
Correct. Yes, that's what it's based on, is the 89%. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Powers?
Yeah, I need to clarify, because on page four, it says four categorical aid payments are expected for FY16. Ms. Jackson, didn't you say five?
I said four.
Oh, okay.
We're expecting four, but we haven't gotten four.
Correct.
For this year, but we're anticipating four.
Yes.
For the next year, even though we've not gotten four for this year, correct?
Got it. And then the other thing was that I'm seeing that the deferred Fund 10 furniture budget, that million, it was originally run 1.3, so we've got 300,000 still budgeted for furniture?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? If none, I'll have the coordinator call the role.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses, one no, and two absent.
Okay, our second action item is the permanent operating transfer of $10 million, which was presented. Are there any question? I'm sorry, I need a motion and a second first on that.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Harner. Seconded by Ms. McCulloch. Any questions or comments on that transfer of $10 million, operating transfer?
And just to be clear, this is the money that we took in under transportation that is now being moved to operations. It was, comes in as part of our levy, correct?
Yes.
And it's not specifically targeted for our capital fund, it is going into the general operating budget.
I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of item 16B, the permanent operating transfer of $10 million.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses, one no, and two absent.
Our next action item then is the resolution approving the participation in the PEPPM Technology Bidding and Purchasing Program that we discussed. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Harner.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Powers. Any questions or discussion? Okay. Oh, Ms. McCulloch.
I know we had a nice explanation last time as to why this is such a great thing, but I happen to think the general bidding process is a good thing as well, so I'm really somewhat bothered by doing this. I think there's an easy button to a certain extent. But that said, I'm, it's not that I'm, I will support it. We certainly are getting into a lot of little consortiums and I just, I'm not sure that we're always ahead in the long run, so.
In response to your concern with that, that is one of the things that we have slated to bring to the operations committee, would be exactly what the procedure is and controls around using purchasing consortiums as opposed to going out to bid. Administration has heard your concerns, and so we do want to assure to you that we will be working out a process that will be vetted through the operations committee. And then we will share that process with the board, just to ensure that this is something that you're comfortable with. Because there are other purchasing co-ops that the district does use, and we've been working with Attorney Bischoff to ensure that all of those are compliant, and so this, we just want to ensure that this is a direction that the board is comfortable with, as well as ensuring that we have the proper controls in place to monitor and make sure that the pricing that is being obtained via a purchasing consortium is competitive with our local bidding process.
Ms. Powers?
So, two points on that. One, we're only giving our designer $300,000, I shouldn't say only, but that's all that's budgeted for two...
Of ours.
Of ours.
That's not all that she's got out of it. The big...
Okay. And then the other piece of it is, I understand through Ops Committee, but I thought that the facilities committee is also where some of the input for furniture and fixtures, or am I mistaken about that? I mean, I know that there are, there are teacher groups that are providing input on furniture and fixtures. So what is, I mean, how does that teacher group hook up with understanding the process for the consortium and all of that kind of thing? Is that, Kevin, is that you?
Well, that wouldn't be hooking up with the process of the consortium, that'd be hooking up with our project manager. When we had that meeting at the REA, we had our interior finishes project manager lay out the process that she used. And when we get the input from the individual buildings of what they want, that's when that individual, our interior designer, would work with the purchasing department to see what's available out there, what the consortiums, or if we have to send something out to bid to get that in there.
Okay, so it will not go through facilities, it'll go through Ops. Okay, I just wanted to confirm there was a mechanism. Thank you.
Ms. McCulloch, do you have another question?
The 300,000 is just what we have coming out of our operating budget. The rest, I mean, there's a heck of a lot more coming out of that, $279 million that we have.
Yes, based on the report that Mr. Harner said, the last facilities oversight committee, and the $250 million, there's $4 million set aside for furniture. We've used approximately 2.1, so we have about $1.9 million of that left. Then outside of that furniture, we needed $17 million, $4 million was in the 250, $13 million was outside of it. This $300,000 that we have budgeted is part of that 14 million that is out, or the 13 million outside of the 250, or 4 million in the 250.
Well, and when the interior designer comes forward and asks a group for their opinions on things, it's not, it's not a group that is sitting there saying, well, I want this, I want that. She would bring some suggestions and they would make, have conversations about their preferences and what the building preferences would be. And so I see these consortiums as being, to a certain extent, a reflection of area, you know, where she might focus, or furniture groups she might focus on as compared to something else that may be out there that may be less expensive even. Not a high-end one that, that's part of this group, but because we're part of this group, well, let's go ahead and go to them. And that's, that's part of my concern.
This isn't the only consortium that we use. We use several different consortiums, and we'll price them out. We'll cost shop with all the different consortium, based on, we have an established budget, and when we bring it out forward, the interior designer will work with the buildings and say, here's some selections, here's, to start the conversation. Then she also uses the feedback that we received in some of the other buildings of some of the furniture that we put in. So she'll take all that together and work with it and say, okay, let me go see what I can get out there. So she'll look at the consortiums, she'll look at other vendors out there, and if there's something out there that the individual buildings really do like, it's within our budget, and it's not on a consortium, then we would send it out to bid.
I just wanted to build on that, but based on the feedback from the teachers, it is an iterative process, that they provide kind of the specs of what they're looking for, designer goes out to see what's there, and that, so it's, it is multiple iterations.
Okay, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 16C, the PEPPM Technology Bidding and Purchasing Program.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and two absent.
Thank you. We'll move on to our other business, new business agenda recommendations, and I believe Earl, Mr. Earl Dotson Jr., you're up first.
Good evening. This is our rental agreement with SMG to pay for our usage of the BMO Harris Bank Center and the Coronado Performing Arts Center for our graduations and rehearsals.
I'm, I'm sure it's in there, and I read this.
Ms. McCulloch?
But I can't remember. What did we pay this year?
$15,000.
Same as last. I mean, that hasn't, there's been no change.
No change.
What's the term of the agreement?
Just for, it's a one-time usage. And they give us a deal, they, I think they, for our rehearsals, they knock off about $7,500, so.
Any other questions? Ms. Jackson?
So we're just approving like the payment, the purchase, I mean, we've already used the facility, so is this like the...
This is for next year.
This is for next year. No, I saw 2015.
Right, 15 is all over it, so...
So what are we approving exactly? Because...
This is, traditionally, I guess, over the last couple of years, it's been billed directly to the individual high schools, but really we should look at a vendor and consolidate the payments for board approval, so this is coming to you. And so the communications department went ahead and consolidated all of the payments and brought it forward for this. So it is a little late, yes?
Okay. Ms. McCulloch?
So we just voted on a budget, did we reduce the budgets to the schools by this amount? They were paying up till this year, right? They were paying for their space? They still will be allocated, but for ease, rather than have them come forward individually, it's been consolidated by the communications department in one fell swoop. So from the fiscal piece, that's all captured, is... Yeah.
Okay, glad we got that clarified. We will, this will come for a vote at our July 7th board meeting then. It's on my, I'm just reading the script. All right, July 7th, 14th. Next is property casualty student accident program liability insurance. Mary Ann Visonan, are you presenting this?
Yeah, the, this is part of the CLIC liability and casualty insurance, we've been using them all along, it just hasn't come to the board before. We've been part of this, it's the school districts consortium for liability insurance, and we've just continued it on, and we just wanted to make sure it came to the board this time, we just felt it was important that it came to the board. It's very similar to what we've been doing all along, and it's all our liability insurance and the standard insurances. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mary Ann?
Did this go through Ops, or has it gone through Ops in the past, do you know?
I don't know that it has gone through Ops. I, we just, we hadn't, I had saw it and thought it needed to come to the board, so I made sure it came to the board. Do, do we need it to go to the Ops?
It typically has not.
Okay.
Any other questions?
But it typically hasn't come to the board, well, I mean, so...
It typically has not come to the board, but it is a contract, and we're trying to hold true to the board policies on contracting. So I'm not sure why it hasn't come to the board in the past, but as we're going through the different contracts, we're ensuring that we're following the board policy. So this is why it's being presented to you.
It's, it's coming under here instead of continuing contracts, because it's the first time it came to the board, but it really is a, an ongoing contract, so we were just trying to keep it, you know...
And this would be for next school year?
Yes.
Any other questions? Ms. Jackson?
No.
This will come for a vote then at our July 14th board meeting. Dr. Wolf, you're up next with the Thomas W. Kroll Trust Grant Acceptance.
Good evening. We're asking the board to accept a grant for a little over $24,200 from the Thomas Kroll Trust. He created a trust, his family did, to honor him to support science or speech forensics, and we would like to improve science education at Kennedy, would include iPads, lab equipment, and other supplies that they would need. Ms. Richardson and her team who have been working on a school improvement grant application are very excited about this potential award.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, this will come for a vote on our July 14th board meeting. And our next item is the elementary school attendance zone. And I don't have...
Yes, this is Robert Schwartz from RSP and Associates. As a continuation of our capital plan, we're looking at consolidating our schools and potentially closing and building some new schools. So part of that process to help us in that planning stage of how we need to reduce our 26 elementary zones into 21, RSP and Associates was hired to do three things. First thing was the demographic analysis, second was enrollment analysis, which they use as a benchmark to create... use as a benchmark to create the new elementary attendance areas. So I'll turn it over to Rob.
All right, good evening. Last week, the day before I came, there was tornadoes. Today, the day before I come up here, there's tornadoes. I think Illinois should ban me from coming up here. But in all seriousness, tonight, we're going to talk to you at 100,000-foot view for most of this. We have full reports that you'll be receiving that get into the demographic analysis, the enrollment analysis, but we're going to focus a little bit on some of the enrollment demographics so you can understand how we went about doing what we did, so you have some faith and some credibility in the numbers and what this really means for these new attendance areas that are being proposed over the next five years. We'll talk a little bit about developments, since you understand some of these new developments or infill developments are a factor. We'll talk about the enrollment projections, and then we'll get into this implementation plan. And hopefully, you'll enjoy, hopefully, there'll be some good dialogue as, as we move through this. A little bit about RSP, though, just for the benefit of everyone, this is the first time I'm speaking to you as, as an entire board. We exclusively work with school districts in the Midwest, assisting them in some of these type of similar situations that you're faced with. How do you implement things that are changing in your district, whether it's additions, renovations, new buildings, closing buildings, and so on? We work with a lot of districts here in Illinois. I'm just here regionally with 308, 203, 204, Yorkville, so we're kind of somewhat familiar with the west side of, of Chicago. And as my previous slide showed, really, there's three areas in our firm. There's myself, who's the founder, a planner, worked with school districts, a city planner, county planner, but we also have educators that assist us with some of the STEM or new initiatives to understand how buildings are operating, and what does this mean with class sizes and the number of students that should be in each of these classrooms? And then we have our GIS analysts. So if you don't like our maps, you don't like our data, you can blame them. I never bring them out, I'm very technical. I love them, but they can get very laborious in their explanations of things. So with that, we'll talk a little bit about enrollment and demographics. In order for us to do what we've done for your district, it was a vast amount of information, some of it coming from the district with the student data, a lot of it coming from the county and the cities to understand what's in the ground. And we'll show you a few maps to help you understand what that all means. So this is really my moments in the presentation where I can thank them, because without their assistance, we would really not be able to do what we've done for you, whether it was the demographic analysis, the enrollment analysis, and now, tonight, the implementation plan. So there's really three key things that you need to know about your district, is enrollment right now is projected to be stable, so that, that's, that's a good thing. There may be some years where there's some slight increases, other years where there's some slight decreases. You'll see that as we work through this presentation. We also know with your implementation plan, there's going to be added or available capacity. So if, let's say there are changes where we see more private parochial homeschool students coming into the system, there should be some space for you to be able to address some of those concerns. We also know that there's limitations on where residential development will occur. A lot of that is based on what city planning is in place, or what availability of the actual resources are in some places of your community, and we'll talk a little bit about that as well. So with that, when we started out with your district, we have to understand geography-wise where the district is, and how does that relate to some of the known geographies? So this particular map, the purple line represents the district boundaries, the solid colors represent the city boundaries. So you can see how all of this starts to come into play. We also look at your attendance areas. And so initially, if you think about breaking this up as a pie, we have your existing high school attendance areas, so we have those four attendance areas. We also have your middle school attendance areas. Seems like my computer's a little bit slow tonight. But we also broke it down by the middle school attendance areas, and then we also broke it down by the elementary attendance areas. So if you think about this, the, the pieces start to get a little bit smaller and smaller. We then break it into what we call planning areas, or you may think of them as subdivisions or type of developments. There's a little over 750 planning areas that we're looking at. These green lines represent what those planning areas are. The bullet points help you identify how we went about creating these planning areas. And it's, it's really an amazement to create them at this level and look at the data sets, whether it's demographics, development, student data, census data, any of the data sets that we can get a hold of. If we zoom in a little bit tighter, I think this is around Brookview Elementary, what you can see from this graphic is there's solid green lines which represent these planning areas, there's faint gray lines which represent the parcels, the dots represent students, multiple dots, different sizes of dots represent the different students that are in that household, and this is showing the 1415 data. So all of this information is being factored into these planning areas. What that looks like in our sophisticated forecast model is really two different formulas. We have our first formula, which is a built-out planning area, and I'm not going to quiz you guys on this, but what you need to think about is where you live, if there's four kindergartner students that live in your subdivision, what's the likelihood in time over the next five years as they become a fourth grader? Are they still living there? If they move out, is someone else moving in? Do they have school-aged children? Are they likely to be kindergartners, middle schoolers, high schoolers, or so on? The same thing happens in the developing planning area, but we're looking at it from a different perspective of similar-type developments and what that yield rate could be as the development builds out. We'll talk some about those yield rates here in a moment. Some of the components that are in this model is cohort growth. So if we have about 1,200 kindergartners, what's the likelihood that it changes over time? Does it increase, decrease, remain the same? External growth, who's moving into the community, or how does that relate to some of the open enrollment opportunities that may exist? Kindergarten change, are we going to see some changes from things that happened maybe five years ago where we saw lower birth rates? Does that have an impact now, five years later, for kindergartners? Economic scenarios, what does that mean as gasoline prices now are back on the rebound to, to being closer to, to $4 a gallon, or actually about $3 a gallon right now, but do we get closer to $4 a gallon? What happens with interest rates for, for homes as they naturally may tend to creep up? Does that change how people choose their housing inventory? Does that change how economics, how employment happens in your community? Those are all variables that get factored into each of those 750 planning areas. So as we look at some of the, the past data that we have to help benchmark things, we're showing student data as an aggregate. This doesn't include the charter schools, it does not include charter schools. So if we look at the kindergarten enrollment back in 1011 of just over 2,000 students, you see here in 1415 about 2,000 students. Another thing that we look at is that senior class of a little over 1,500 students in 1314. The incoming class of 1415 is larger, so we see a net increase just with some of the cohort data that's happening. As we look at this cohort data from grade to grade, you'll see some of those changes. You'll see a three-year average and a three-year weighted average. Those are kind of some benchmarks for us to understand in our projections. Are we hitting some of the most recent trends or trends that are emerging at this district level of students that includes the alternative programs? And the note I want to make on this is there's been some changes in state requirements of how some of the data is presented to the state, and so some of these decreases you see here are in relation to those changes. So that's some of the past data. We also look at things that we'll call the in-migration. So these are students that would have been new to the district in 1415. You can see on my bullet points, we have a little over 2,200 students that are new to the district. The point of this map is you can see dots, and you can see the dots are all over the district, and they're not concentrated in one specific area. So this shows you that there's change happening, and it's change at a different rate in different places throughout your district. We also look at outmigration of students. So the outmigration of students would be students that were here in 1314 but no longer attending in 1415 as those first through 12th grade students. Again, you see the dots throughout the district, but you see that there's more students that have left the district than that were coming in the district for in-migration. That, when you factor in what I told you earlier, a smaller senior class, larger incoming kindergarten class, that kind of offsets some of the change that you see here, thus getting at some of the reasoning why we're saying a stable enrollment, where some years you may have an increase, other years might be some slight decreases. So I'm not going to read each of these bullet points of the baseline data, but this is just to give you some synergy of some of the data sets that we're looking at, whether it was demographics, the student data, census data, ESRI data, what, what are some of the things that we're seeing that are occurring in your community, and why we think things will happen in your district as far as enrollment is concerned? We look at some of the census data for zero to four-year-olds, looking out in 2019 with the census estimates, and this is a density, so we see the reds and the orange, that's where we see the greatest density of census population estimates for zero to four-year-olds. This is kind of a valuable map in understanding where those future kindergartners are going to be. Again, one of those baseline data sets. We also look at the females in the cohort of 15 to 59. I do have to give you a warning, we're not saying we want 15-year-olds to have kids or 59-year-olds, but it's a nice cohort to understand that zero to four-year-old. What can we see with some of these emerging trends for future kindergartners? You're going to see, these two maps are very similar, and gets into some of the baseline data that we're looking at, that we're seeing typically smaller household sizes, we're seeing fewer children in a household, but that's different with different subgroups that, when we look at the demographic analysis, that again is a factor into how we're forecasting what enrollment will look like over the next five years. So that's some of the, again, the baseline data. We look at this with the planning areas, again, the 750 planning areas that we have, you can see change that's occurring naturally in your district with each of these 750 planning areas. Orange areas represent where we've seen increases, green areas represent where there's been decreases. So this is just actual count difference. We also look at it from the perspective of density, because the planning areas are of a different size. You'll notice, if you were to compare these maps side by side, very similar in what the result is. And again, the reason we do this density is because the planning areas are different in size, and so some of the larger planning areas on the previous map may look like there's more change than really is actually happening. So other things that were helpful in us understanding where students are located and how that creates these attendance areas in, in different years, when we get into the implementation plan, is this heat map. The red dot areas are where we're seeing the greatest density of students. So you can see where some of those clusters are and how that's going to create some of the limitations or challenges in the process that we had to go through to create these attendance boundaries over the next five years. So a little bit about development. Some baseline data that we show in this particular graphic is data that's from the county and/or cities that shows us the certificate of occupancies, which is the blue line, which is relatively small in the number of, of units that there indicated have come online over the last few years. We look at the enrollment change, you can see that going farther back, there were some decreases, and even here in the last couple of years, there's been some slight decreases with the enrollment minus the charter schools. And then you can see on the census population estimate, they're showing that over time, there's going to be fewer people that live in the area that earmarked with your district boundary. So this is some of the baseline data to, again, understand what, what's happening in your community. We look at some other data sets, some other maps that are the existing land use, so what's in the grounds. Other maps I don't have up here in this presentation would be like the future land use plan, or what is the vision for some of these emerging areas, whether it's new developments, like a 70-unit development that we're aware of, how many students is that going to offset with maybe some of the demographic changes that are happening in any particular area? Ultimately, from this information, we create what we call a growth area map that's identified what's happening now, what could happen in the next five years, and what could happen beyond five years. Now, other things can happen at any given point, because there's several things that nobody has control over. And the first is, if you own the property, do you want to develop it? And the second is, whatever you're going to develop, does it have a market? So we know some of the things, once we put this map up, it may show or, or not show some of the things, is it's an emerging, organic process of what happens with developments. So I'm not going to read all of these key considerations. I think you guys have probably seen a lot of this presentation that, that we've provided, but, but in general, we're, we're showing a very stable community that you can start to plan for some of the changes that are occurring with demographic and so on throughout the community. We've also factored in that there's going to be an attractiveness as some of the changes occur to the buildings for more students to maybe enroll in your district that in previous years may not have made that choice. And, and that's, that's a positive aspect as you make some of the changes, whether it's physically to the buildings or to the programming the students receive. So a little bit about enrollment projections, you can see, I've been telling you, it's, it's about flatline overall with, with, with enrollments, but you see that at the different levels, there's some enrollment change. So if we see less, with the recent change in high school students, if we see that, less than what has been occurring the last few years, we could see more students when we get five years out than what we're forecasting here. So this is something that you're going to want to monitor, particularly at the secondary level, as things move forward over the next five years. But again, our focus for the implementation plan was the elementary schools. So what I just went over is usually something I'll take about an hour to talk about in great deal and have different questions. Implementation plan. All right, there were several things when we were hired that we spoke about with different persons that we thought would be of value to this process, and it gets into the strategies, is we felt that in the districts that we work in, most of the districts want to see a walkable attendance area, so students that are closest to the buildings being able to walk to those schools. We also knew in your district, there's a capacity, and the capacity for the elementaries is based on the monolingual or bilingual capacity that's assigned by the district. So where those programs are associated in buildings are going to have an impact of the number of students and where those students are, how do they fit into that building? We also were trying to keep as many students as possible in the existing attendance areas. That being said, when you close buildings, they can't stay in that existing building, right? They have to go someplace else. So we tried to disrupt as few a student as we possibly could through this process. We also wanted to efficiently utilize the elementary school inventory that is available and that was planned to be available over the next five years. We were planning for an el, new elementary school opening, Elementary 1 in 1819, a new elementary school number two in 1920. We also were trying to create contiguous attendance areas, so not having islands for your attendance areas. We wanted to utilize the transportation network and other natural and man-made features to make logical, common sense boundaries, again, within reason, because some of the capacities of the buildings, where the programming is, had some limitations on just what those attendance areas could look like. And then again, we wanted to create some logical attendance areas that would minimize some of the negative transportation situations. For instance, crossing over some of the busy attendance areas, creating better efficiency of your transportation, minimizing how long a student may be on the bus. So those were some of the philosophies or strategies. We also had some philosophies of how to go about creating these attendance areas. So the first thing is we had these planning areas, and I told you, we had over 750 of them, and that's the value of their statistical analysis of those 750 planning areas. We geocoded all of the students, from the student data from 1011 through 1415. We categorized those students by reside, since we, with the geocoding, it's matching their address to where they physically are in the district. We also knew from the student data where they actually were attending the school. And then also looking at the data from where they reside, and do they actually attend that facility? Because we have the alternative programming as, as well, that's a factor into all of this. Then we also were looking at some of the traits of the students, which would be the free and reduced lunch, the ethnicity, things that are in the student data to understand, you know, what, what are some of the characteristics of what's happening with those students, and how does that maybe relate to the choice of programming where they go? We then classified the students by the educational programming. So were they regular enrolled? Were they in the alternative program? Are they the transitional bilingual education, so the TBE, or the transitional program of instruction? Instruction, the TPI? So all of this data is swirling around in our different data sets to understand, as we start to look at where students are, where will they likely be attending a school? And then ultimately, our goal was to create new attendance areas that would address some of the student choice, which gets into the educational programming, the capacity of the buildings, and then what's happening with enrollment trends. Because the goal is that we make these boundary changes, and you don't have to keep making changes in two years, in three years. And I think that was, again, the vision of your master plan and what potentially could happen with remodeling spaces, new spaces, and new buildings being brought along. So that was some of the philosophy. We ultimately worked with administration on what the capacity could be. And I know this chart up here, even with my younger eyes, is very difficult to read. But what the value of this chart was, was to target, as we were looking at buildings coming offline or being repurposed, what is the capacity going to be in that building? And specifically at the elementary level with monolingual and bilingual students, to ensure that whatever the boundary looks like, we have the right number of students that are going to receive the type of programming that would be offered in those buildings. And so the big thing there is the purple bullet points of the strands. When we look at the monolingual, one strand is 172 students. For bilingual, one strand is 155 students. So that'll help you understand some of the math behind what the strands makeup is in each of the buildings. So lots of moving parts, lots of things that we were looking at, lots of controls to try to figure out, how does this all come together? So, all that, then we had a transition schedule. So the maps on the following pages helped address some of the things with when schools closed, when there was going to be repurposing of schools, when new schools would come online, and some of the educational programming changes, to be able to see, can the students fit in the years that the actual boundary change would be taking place? So, we had some transitional changes for one school, and that was Carlson, and there's two changes. One happens in 1617, this one, Marsh Elementary closes, we could move that entire attendance area up into Carlson. And then in 1819, that was in combination with what would happen with the planned New Elementary School One in 1819. So those are kind of some of the transition schedule things. So here we are in 1415. One of the changes that we did in this presentation from what we did in the committee was, there was, hey, we're missing some years of maps. Well, the maps we didn't have weren't missing, excuse me, they actually were just, there was no changes happening in that year, so it was the same boundary as what was in place. So here we are in 1415, these are the boundaries that you have in place. Nothing really changes in 1516 with your boundaries, but we do have a grade configuration change between Nashold and Riverdale. And so you see, Riverdale goes to a K3, and Nashold houses 45. Right now, it's K235. So we're showing a grade configuration change, the boundary stays the same, but how we're utilizing those buildings to phase out for the planned repurposing of a building. So, we get to 1617, what we were able to accomplish is new complete attendance areas for Conklin, Ellis, Froberg, the King/Washington, again, they'll be at King for another year, but the King/Washington transition, we have Lathrop, Lewis-Lemon, McIntosh, Welsh, and Westview. And then, of course, we're showing the first phase change for Carlson when Marsh is closing. You can see, we have Marsh closed, Walker closed, and then Nashold houses the fifth grade, and Riverdale's the K4. So you see how that transition takes place as we move into 1617. We get to 1718, we have Nashold closing, and again, the boundaries are staying the same as they were previously, but now we've had the grade configuration change fully occurring between those two buildings. Then when we get to 1819, that's the next big change, and that's predicated on New Elementary One opening somewhere near or around where Nelson Elementary is. And that helped create some of the boundaries that you see here. But again, when I show you the table, you'll see how all these numbers play out. Everything went back to what the capacities that were available, the programming that was in the building, the type of students that may be making a choice to go to the alternative programming, and so on. So again, in 1819, with New Elementary One coming online, we have buyer being repurposed as the early childhood, we have that whole King closing Washington, where now we're using Washington fully as a K5 building, we have Kishawaki closing, we have Nelson closing, and then we have new attendance areas that are for Bloom, Brookview, Froberg, Hillman, Gregory, Johnson, New Elementary One, Riverdale, Rolling Green, Spring Creek, and Whitehead, and then we have the second phase of Carlson. All those changes you can see on this map as you're looking at the iterations. So then we get to 1920. A change there, which we were able to keep with Cherry Valley, Whiteswan, and Thompson, with those buildings closing and New Elementary Two opening, you have one larger attendance area that takes in those three areas. And so that creates the completion of a transition plan that takes you with what was ideally set out in your master plan of all of these different changes, and works you through the next five years in that timeline of how that could go about. Now, a little bit, excuse me, about the numbers. What you're going to see in this particular table is a list of each of the buildings. And one of the things that I wanted to make a note is, when the building was going to be repurposed or no longer utilized as a K5 building, you're going to see that we have these blank lines. Because we're trying to get at what the ultimate end capacity availability would be at the elementary level. As we move to the right with the capacity, you'll see the new capacity being defined for those buildings. When we get to the final build-out, all the changes to the buildings, and then you'll see the breakdown of that capacity for the monolingual and bilingual programming. That was very critical in how we were able to establish what the attendance areas could be. So if I kind of take you through what you're not seeing on this data, we had, if you remember, I said we geocoded all the students over the last four years. So we know where all the students are, so if we select it, as you saw the colors on each of the maps, all of the students that would be associated with that. We then peeled off the likelihood of alternative students making the choice to go to the alternative programming schools. We then peeled off, with what you're seeing here, there's no alternative, there's no charter school students, and then the TBE and the TPI students, all of them pulled out of this. The numbers that you're seeing for these transition projections are that. No alternative students, no charter school students, and none of the TBE students. So this is how we get at what the future number of students would be at in these buildings, and they correspond with the changes that we're seeing year by year as shown in those maps. The yellow shading is where we exceed a little bit of the capacity in those buildings. So, for instance, when we're looking at Gregory, we can see that what's happening there is, over time, we see fewer students in that attendance area. So we get closer to that 172 monolingual capacity, we have 176 students there. So we're getting close to what the number of students would be in this building. You can see there's a couple other buildings that we have similar challenges. Lewis-Lemon, where it's a 516, and we're about 525, so about 10 students from that capacity. We look at Rolling Green, you can see with the 344, we get down to a 360 enrollment. So you can see how some of these programs are starting to get into what the capacity might be for those buildings. Then we have Whitehead Elementary at 344, and you can see that as we get out to 1819, it gets under what that capacity would be for the building. Now, so all of these areas that we saw where there was a little bit overcapacity in these buildings, administration has indicated there would be a way to make things happen in those buildings. May not be perfect, but as you start to look at, again, peeling back each of those layers of the onion, it's very difficult to start making some of these changes and have everything work out perfectly the way you need to. This was a plan that gets back to the strategies and the philosophy and where the capacities are. This was the best that our team could put together to meet some of the challenges that you guys had with what's going on in your district. Another thing about this chart that's of note is, as you move to the right, you're going to see with these students that were in 1415, how they relate in the 1920 boundaries. What is that percentage of free and reduced lunch? What is that percentage of the ethnicity breakdown by each of these subgroup categories? So you can see, you know, what are the differences? How does that relate? From that, we had students impacted by a boundary change. And so you can see, just lots of data. And one of the challenges that we have for administration that we're going to be able to deliver to them is not only showing you the students impacted by a boundary change, but what is it by grade? So things are looking at some of the staffing and saying, well, are there opportunities for students maybe to remain in schools? Or are there opportunities to actually allow students to move to the building where they're going to end up going, because there's space there? But a little bit about the students that are impacted by a boundary change. Since we really have three changes that are occurring, 1617, 1819, and 1920, the way we look at the students that are impacted by the boundary change, it's the known students that we have here in 1415. What will that look like? So out in 1617, any of the boundary changes that occur in 1617, it's the known kindergarten through third grade. That SIBC number gets larger as we get to the year before the boundary change, but the known students of K through three for 1617, we add to 1819, that would just be the known kindergarten in first grade, and then in 1920, the known kindergarten. So, most of the students will be impacted, again, the year before the change occurs. So that number goes up the year before. We also are not factoring in the phasing grade changes that occur between Riverdale and Nashold, because it's a natural change between those buildings, so we didn't put that in. We're also not factoring in any grandfathering or student options. There's no way we would know what board or administrative actions might be for that. So these numbers, again, can be changed for the better or more efficiently utilizing some of these buildings based on what comes through on that. So kind of the breakdown of all this in 1516, no students are impacted, because we don't have any changes. We get to 1617, the known kindergarten through third is 537 students. 1718, again, no changes, so zero students are impacted. We get to 1819, 637 students are impacted. And then when we get to 1920, there's 106. So for a total of 1,280 students that are impacted through this boundary change. Again, this number, it goes up a little bit as you get to the year before the boundary change actually occurs. So, I know you can't read these tables unless you have the printout, but this shows you the breakdown of the schools that are at and the school across the top that they're going to be going to. And so as you're looking at the maps, and you're looking at how these changes are occurring in each of these buildings, you can kind of get that visual of what's happening in the modeling, what's happening with some of the decisions that you'll need to make for staffing. I'm not, this goes through each of the three years where we see those big changes. All right, we have kind of some next steps, and this is where we expand it from our committee just to give a better understanding of what do you need to do as a board. And it's this second bullet point with these two options that the committee kind of left last week, is one, you can improve the entire plan that would get into the boundary changes that are proposed for 1617, 1819, and 1920. Option two would be to approve the plan for 1617, but wait on decisions that are related to New Elementary One and New Elementary Two for those boundary changes that occur in 1819 and 1920. You could approve those in a later year. That's kind of where the committee left with this particular presentation. Really, this next bullet point, communication. And this is where we've been working with administration on some of those necessary steps for the community to know about whatever it is the board ends up approving, how are they going to know where they go to school and what those boundaries look like? So there's things from the maps, this presentation, and different things that they're going to work on with getting that information out. There may be even some digital options for address location to be able to know in all of these years, what elementary school would you potentially go to school? And all of that, again, is related to which of these two options the board moves forward with. Do you approve the entire plan, or do you just approve the plan for 1617 and you wait on 1819 and 1920? So ultimately, this next bullet point is, once you've established a system that we've created for you, you want to monitor what's happening. And so this is what we'd recommend, is you want to have some ongoing maintenance of what's happening with your enrollment and are things tracking in such a way that you're having the appropriate staff in each of the buildings. So with that, I'll go over here, and I'm going to hit this animated GIF. You can see the visual, hopefully I think we have it on a continuous loop as I answer some of your questions that you may have.
Ms. McCullough?
And I know at the very beginning, you talked about the fact that you looked at the middle school and the high school boundaries. You did use those as feeder, feeders to the, when you developed your elementary zones, as feeders to the middle and high school. Did you not? I mean, there was not...
It was a factor, but ultimately, what was a greater driving factor was trying to be able to get the capacity as defined for the monolingual and bilingual, to make sure that we were getting the right type of students to be able to fit the programming that was going to be offered in any and all of these buildings. But we tried to, as best as possible, try to fit into what you see for your current feeder.
So you won't see, how many of the buildings, the way that it's been drawn for elementary, will have students going to multiple middle schools?
That's something I would need to get back, and I'll write a note down here, to transition from middle school, elementary to middle school.
Right. I think one of our, one of our goals all in this district, since we've gone to zones, has always been that students can transition together to the middle school and then to the high school. So certain middle schools, because we have more middle schools obviously than high schools, and we have more elementary schools than we have middle schools. But so that we saw that, we didn't see a breakup of students as they hit sixth grade, and half of them going to one schools and half of them going to the other. We do have that happening, but I'm just wondering what extent this plan, it happens in this plan?
That's perfect. In an ideal world, the entire study would have included the middle school and the high school, so you could have created a comprehensive look at the district. But that may be something that's coming, because again, if you go back to the data sets that we have, whether it's the enrollment analysis, the demographic analysis, there are lots of changes that are occurring in your district, as people are making different choices with different housing products, the different type of yield rates and so on. So I would fully anticipate there's more study that's going to be required to have a, what I would call, a complete feeder from elementary to middle and then on into high school.
Well, and we did say, when we came to zones, and they did high schools and middle schools long before the elementaries, but we did talk about the fact that we would have to relook at those boundaries every so many years. And so, when's the last time we made adjustments in our middle and high school boundaries, Mr. Schmidt?
It is four or five years ago that we looked at it, when we initially went into it. Part of the process here is, once we have identified the elementary zones, then we would start working on a committee to look at, you know, in the next few months after the board approves the elementary, start working on the middle school and high schools based on, this is a foundation.
Would we be having a contract to have them?
Yeah, that would be a whole nother process. Where, we wanted to finish this one up, because this relates to the capital plan and reducing the elementary footprint, so we wanted to make sure we get this all taken care of, then we'll start working on the middle and high schools.
Okay. Because it's incredibly important that this is an objective process. And so, if we were to try to do something like that in-house, that would not meet that requirement.
Other questions? Ms. Jackson?
You referenced Marsh as being closed, and I thought Marsh was being repurposed. So is that what you mean when you say Marsh being closed?
Yeah, repurposed. Air on my part. Air on my part, utilized no longer for the K5 inventory that is in the master plan. Thank you.
And then my other question is, we have two documents. One is the enrollment report, which is 2014, 2015, but this demographic report says 2013, 2014. Why does it have that year on there?
It's based on when we were doing the work with the primary data sets that we had available, which at that time was, I believe, the 1314 data. When we moved into the enrollment analysis, it was the 1415 data and so on. As you can see, two very different documents. The demographic analysis, it's really a beautiful document to understand the current conditions and what that means with different aspects, whether it's ethnicity, things that are the inventory in that attendance area and so on. Whereas the enrollment analysis focuses on, what do we see for future enrollment by attendance area?
And so, I was one of the board members that didn't support zones for many reasons. One of them was, I was concerned about the segregation of our schools. So I'll just talk about our city in terms of north, south, east, west. So if you come west, it's predominantly black. If you go south, it's predominantly black Latino. If you go east, it's predominantly white. If you go north, it's a little more diverse. So how does your recommendations address that?
I think it addresses based on, with the neighborhoods, where people live, and trying to create neighborhood schools. If we were to focus on, let's say, in general context of following what you clearly know and what you see in the analysis that we've provided for the demographic analysis reports, if we were to create things that would be equity balanced on, let's say, ethnicity, we would have a very different looking plan, where it would almost be a busing plan, where you'd take parts of one part of the community and move it here and there. So I think the focus that we had from legal counsel was, the facilities would have equity in what programming would be in each of the buildings. And so by trying to create a plan that had neighborhood schools, a plan that would focus on where the bilingual, monolingual students are or could be, that became kind of the baseline, rather than trying to look at something that, in essence, would create a patchwork quilt of a scenario. And if that was something that the board gave direction to, most assuredly, we could look in those particular parameters.
Ms. Holdley, you want to?
As I understand from your report, there was a very specific criteria, given, none of which included race or ethnicity, as far as drawing the boundaries.
That's correct.
Okay. And you cited too, all of the different criteria, right?
Correct. All the criteria you saw on my slide with best planning practice, or philosophy, or what was happening with transitions and whatnot, those were the cornerstones to creating what has been presented to you tonight.
Okay. And can you explain why you asked that, I guess, or is that, are you asking that in reference to my question, or what?
It was, because race or ethnicity would not be considered in such a plan, and I'm not sure that it wouldn't be unlawful.
I'm bringing up a concern, I'm bringing up a concern about the demographics.
Other questions?
Would I be accurate, you know, looking at one of your last slides, and the number of students that were going to be changed in their boundaries, it was about 1,200 students. So if our total elementary population today is 12,000, to me, that's 10%. So 10% of our students over that five-year period would be affected roughly with a boundary change. Would that be correct?
No, actually, what I would say is that 10%, about 10% of the known students are being impacted, as we get to the year before the change, when you're looking at, let's say, 1617, and you look at the students that are impacted, it's going to be, in 1516, the K4 enrollment at that given time. So the SIBC number goes up, as you know, the actual number of students the year before the boundary change occurs. And I think that's why, as, at the committee, we were saying, it's probably going to be closer to about 20% of the students that are ultimately impacted, when you're looking at it from the year before the boundary change actually takes place. We never show SIBC with a projected number. It's always based on the actual number of students that we know in the day, in the year that we're actually working on the analysis.
Can I just add to that? It's not really 12,000 students, because if you look, the elementary students that are in the year-round program, the Montessori program, the gifted program, and the bilingual aren't in that chart. So that takes off another, you know, 3,500 kids or so, so you're looking down there about 8,500 to 9,000 students.
In another way, just to build on that, when you look at the table we have, like in 1516, we're showing the universe of what we're forecasting for this plan. There's about 9155 elementary students. So when you look at that 1,200, again, it's about that 10%, but it's going to go up as you get closer to the year in which the boundary change takes place.
Mr. Schmidt, did you want to add something to that? No? Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation, great job. This is, will also be presented at our July 14th board meeting for a vote, and is there any other business for this evening? Ms. Powers?
I'm curious as to why these youngsters have chosen, or maybe not chosen, to spend this time observing this board meeting. So could you elect a nominee or a spokesperson to tell us exactly why you endured what I wouldn't if I had to?
Can you hit the microphone for me? And I believe your name is Raven, right?
My name is Raven.
All right, okay.
We are participants of the YMCA Intern Challenge. Our upcoming challenge is focusing on getting more diversity and young people into boards. So we would, we were interested in attending the board meeting, seeing what happens, exposing the whole group to it, and then we were hoping to maybe have a little survey with you guys afterwards, if you were willing to offer up some information.
Great. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Well, I'm thrilled to death that you're here, because I love the diversity I see there. Thank you.
Any other new business, or, now I'll take a motion for adjournment? Moved by Ms. Jackson, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, we adjourned at 8:37.